Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 5, 2019 meeting at Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. Ms. LaMagna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the City Commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Item 10A are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the items you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the Public Comment Form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey, and a ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during this meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here now.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Gilliland.
Heavenly Father, bless us all and all the members of Daytona Beach and our forces overseas and everyone around. Give us the wisdom to do the best we can for our community. Lead us into patience and guide us in all our endeavors. We beseech you. Thank you. Amen.
Well, now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the February 13, 2019 Half-Cent Sales Tax Workshop and the May 1, 2019 Business Meeting of the City Commission.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Five. If there are any changes to our agenda, our City Manager, Mr. Chisholm, will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One addition, Item 8G, allocation of bike week sponsorship funds to the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by stating aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries, 7-0.
Okay, we'll now move on to Item Number Six, which is our presentations. Our first presentation, number 6A, from the City Clerk's office, is a Veterans Museum and Educational Center. John Brinkley, President, and Bob Hayes, Vice President, Halls, Vice President and Museum Curator, to present.
Good evening, members of the City Commission. I'm John Brinkley. I am the founder and president of an organization known as the Veterans Museum and Education Center. It's an organization that pays tribute to those persons who have served in our military and whose service and sacrifice have allowed us to live in a free country. Just a few days ago, a special event took place in our country. Memorial Day was a special day all over the USA. We honored those people who had died serving in the military. In a few months, in November, there's also going to be a special salute to our veterans for those who served at Veterans Day. These are the kinds of things that we want to try to bring out and give some spotlight to those veterans. One of the things that we're trying to do here is create a museum that would allow us to do this. We can pay homage to some of our heroes. We can do a better job of educating our young people, and we can have a place where we can come and be proud and express our pride in our country, pride in our country. This museum has been in place now here in about the last three months at 166 South Beach Street on the second floor of the Tick Flock Building. It's been made possible by support of many of our veterans, the business community, and other citizens who have been giving us a great support. And that support has also come from our mayor, and we appreciate that. Some of you have probably never had a chance to visit the museum. So tonight, we're going to give you the opportunity to take a look at the museum by way of a video. Joseph, if we could start the museum video, let's take a look inside the museum.
Welcome to the Veterans Museum and Education Center of Daytona Beach, Florida. The museum was founded by John Brinkley, an Air Force and Marine Corps veteran, to accomplish the mission of educating the public about the importance of our veterans. We do that by paying tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who have defended our freedom and liberty, by educating future generations in understanding the cost of freedom, and by encouraging and fostering pride and patriotism in our country. Our museum is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation, supported by an all-volunteer staff, and total financial support is provided by membership fees, sponsors, and tax-deductible donations. We want to put a human face on the story about the defense of freedom by explaining the sacrifice required to keep our country free. It isn't just a showcase of artifacts, but rather items associated with the cause and patriots involved in maintaining our liberty and freedom. This video cannot describe the entire museum, but we hope you will take the time to visit us and see firsthand the story of the American veterans. who made the ultimate sacrifice. Many veterans laid down their lives in places all over the world to preserve freedom and liberty. There are no words powerful enough to properly honor our brave heroes, but we hope these exhibits and displays can remind us of their commitment, courage, and sacrifice. This is an effort to extend the legacy of our men and women who have served or are now serving in our armed forces. We need your participation by becoming a member. We need your help in generating funds to support this community project. Membership fees, special donations, and sponsorships are all tax-deductible. We need volunteers to act as greeters and to help with the general operation of the museum. Thank you very much for watching this video, and we hope that you will soon visit it in person.
Now we've reached the point where we're going to have to, looks like, move into some other place other than where we are. That's going to be a while. We don't know for sure. We're trying to negotiate that with our owner of the building that we're in. He's not in a rush to push us out, but we're working with him because he has some things he wants to do with that building. So we hope that we may be able to partner with the city to be able to use one of the vacant buildings that is here in the city. I'm going to ask Bob Halls, our Vice President and our Museum Curator, if he would pick up from here and talk about the needs for the museum and how we may be able to work with the city to move into some other place here.
General George Patton once said, "We should not mourn the men and women who gave their lives for their country. Rather, we should thank the Lord that such men and women lived." My name is Bob Halls, and I'm the Vice President and Curator of the Veterans Museum and Education Center on Beach Street, right here in Daytona Beach. I am a Korean War combat veteran and very proud of my service. The good Lord has spared my life so I could be here with you tonight to make you a proposition that you can't refuse. We would like to move our museum into the vacant Historic City Island Recreation Building as an honorable, caring tenant and add to the attraction of the memorial area. We have done the work. Thousands of volunteer hours have gone into putting together a world-class veterans museum right here in Daytona Beach. Some have said it's the best in the state. This is a major tourist attraction, having hosted over 8,000 visitors from around the country and around the world. A major tourist attraction. TripAdvisor on the Internet gives us an excellent rating and number five out of 11 museums in Daytona Beach. They call it a hidden jewel. Thousands of personal artifacts have been donated by people in memory of loved ones, friends, and relatives. They have entrusted us with their most precious items in the hope that these things will be available to future generations for viewing and research. Enshrinements have taken place. Pictures of loved ones have been posted. This is a living, breathing reminder of some of the fiercest combat that has ever taken place by the military of the United States that has resulted in the freedom that we enjoy. The fact that you are not speaking a foreign language or being forced at gunpoint to join or being prohibited from joining any religion is as a result of the sacrifices by veterans that is beyond our comprehension. We have done the work. The museum is up and ready and waiting to be able to tell our people, our schoolchildren, and our future generations the story of American veterans. We have done the work, and the museum is ready for a permanent home. A permanent home for the exhibits, stories, memories, the heartbreak, and the sacrifices. We value the past to sustain the future, the story of American veterans. The museum is a 503 nonprofit corporation with officers, a very prestigious Board of Directors and Advisory Council. We receive donations, large and small, and know that this will continue to grow in the future. We currently have over 120 members, with more joining every month. We have 20 volunteer greeters and charge no admission fee. 100% of all donations goes to the operation of the museum. We have done the work. We just need your help to finally get a permanent home for all the treasures. The museum belongs to everyone in Daytona Beach and Volusia County. It is your museum. It is your memorabilia. It is your memories or those of your loved ones. Our volunteers have put it together at no cost to you, and it will be an additional jewel in the restoration of the Beach Street area with a maintenance cost that would be a tiny fraction of the planned maintenance cost of the park area. We have been told that Daytona Beach has no money. I would like to tell you about several of our members. Chris Casuto, a World War II veteran who is 96-year-old. He was on Omaha Beach in Normandy two days after D-Day. He was wounded in France. Tom Murphy, who was a coxswain on a landing craft in D-Day. Tom Cochran, who was in Vietnam and was seriously wounded, and I could go on. All of these men have donated personal time or treasured items to the museum. Can you explain to these veterans that the great city of Daytona Beach has no money to sponsor a veterans memorial museum but is perfectly comfortable with spending $800,000 annually to maintain trees and shrubs on the Riverfront Park? Will you help us? We would like the use of the City Island Recreation Center as a tenant, an existing historic building that was built for military personnel during World War II and was cared for by the city for all the years after. It just needs a little tender loving care. It's at the Beginning of the Memorial Bridge and a few steps from the proposed Veteran Memorial Park. We will create something that Daytona Beach will be proud of. Honorable Mayor, and Commissioners, and City Manager, we can't wait. We must move from our present location. We need you to allow us the use of the building, make some necessary repairs, and provide for its services and maintenance the way you have always done for the building in the past. This is not a new expenditure. It's maintenance and repairs on existing city-owned building that is not being utilized. There is a growing groundswell of public controversy and distrust over City Island and this building in particular. How better to resolve all the conflicted feelings by sponsoring and creating a great veterans museum that can become the number-one attraction for the newly-created Riverfront Park area? A trio of magnificence: the Veterans Memorial Bridge, the Veterans Memorial Park, and the Veterans Memorial Museum and Education Center of Daytona Beach. Within a few months, it could become a reality, a place of honor for all veterans, a memorial that schoolchildren and residents can visit and see and learn the story of the sacrifices made for the freedom they enjoy, the story of the American veteran. Folks, we have done the work. Let's keep it going. Thank you so very much.
May I just make an aside? Tomorrow is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, when our troops stormed Normandy Beach, as the gentleman said.
And by the way, tomorrow at the museum, we're going to have two veterans who did the landing at D-Day. Come in and visit these guys. Say hello to them and thank them.
They also had a program on television today about three women who went over to France to see the grave of their brother. Their ages were 92 to 97, and they were part of the Rosie the Riveters who built the planes for our guys.
Wow. Fabulous. Mr. Brinkley and Mr. Halls, I want to first thank both of you. Mr. Brinkley, for your vision and insight to create this treasure. I too have described it as a hidden jewel in our community. Mr. Halls, your verbal skills are definitely to be admired, and you make certainly a compelling and convincing argument. I certainly am hopeful that we will be able to do something to be supportive. As you well know, I'm very supportive of your efforts. What we will do at this point, as it relates to what you're requesting, the manager has a situation where we're trying to determine what this property is going to cost, and at some point in time in the near future, hopefully, we will be able to sit down and have a discussion amongst ourselves as an elected body to see if there is a route. But what I will say to you is that if, and this is me speaking, my perspective, if there is a route to making this a reality, I have said in the past that I personally believe that this particular site might very well be a great location for this. And I think with the bridge and the issues and concerns that people have with City Island, that it would be a natural fit. But that's just me speaking. But what I will say in addition is that I think that it will take heavy lifting, and if it is that the building can be restored, finding the funding for that to be done is not going to simply rest on the city. And I'm not one to not speak the entire truth. So if that is a reality, we need to all be working to figure out how we can as a community. And I mean that because this is not simply a Daytona Beach jewel as so many things are. It's a jewel that belongs to our entire region. So we need to be figuring ways that we will be able to bring it to fruition in a monetary way. So that's just me speaking, and if the other Commissioners have anything else they want to say, I welcome those comments. Otherwise, we're going to move on. We're not, this is not a public comment, sir, so we're not going to take public remarks at this time. If you would like to address us, you may do that as it relates to this item at the end of the meeting, but we're not going to make it a, it's not an agenda item.
Yeah, I want to do a quick review of the routine, but, and I just want to ask what I want to say.
You know, I'm not going to be able to permit that. Okay, and thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, could we get Jim to tell us where are we with the contract for the evaluation of the building?
They're working on the evaluation right now. They've done some initial investigation to determine some of the damages and some of the efforts it'll take to restore some of it. I do not have a report back so that I could detail any of that information at this time.
So the bid came in under $25,000, so you were able to authorize it on your own?
I believe so, if I remember right. Yes, that's correct.
No.
Hopefully, it went that way for you, Jim.
Yes. We moved it forward, and I certainly didn't violate the code.
If you could get us a report on the timeline of when they think it will be completed, that would be, that would be helpful.
We'll try to do that.
Also, it sounds like, and I've been there, it sounds as though the museum has grown since I last went there, because I went there when you first got there, because you're on Beach Street, very close to my business. And if it's grown, and we're expecting all of these people to come and visit, because I would hope that, people would want to come and visit, I wonder with the school kids and the tourists, the locals coming, if that building is actually big enough? Because I suspect you're going to grow. When people start to hear about what you're accomplishing, that you're going to grow, and you will attract, as you were saying, you're already attracting 8,000 people now. You will most likely attract more, and more people will send memorabilia, which I think sounds like it is definitely a statewide, countrywide thing, and as word gets out, more veterans will send things. Do you think that would happen? More people would send things?
I don't believe, I don't believe it will come from outside our immediate area. And the other thing to ask you--
Could you come back to the mic, Mr. Halls, if you're going to ask a question?
I'm sorry.
Please come back.
We are in a building right now that has 10,000 square feet upstairs, but I personally measured off the exact area that we're using for exhibits came to 4,500 square feet. So 4,500 square feet plus an area for seating, about 5,000 square feet. And that building over there has about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet.
But do you suspect you will grow with more--
Yes, we would grow, but we can, we can, we can hold the growth. I mean, we don't need 10,000 or 15,000 or 20,000. You can only, you can only display so many uniforms and so much stuff, you know? And it's a matter maybe of shifting, of shifting exhibits, you know? You put one up and you take it down and like that, you know?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Again, thank you. We appreciate the excellent presentation. There are no other comments.
Moving on to Item Number 6B, is the presentation of the Daytona Tortugas Appreciation Plaque. Mayor Henry to present. Eileen, Eileen, do you think you could, thank you. And we'll go ahead and continue with our presentation for 6B.
We have a representative from the Tortugas--
Several years ago, we embarked upon an endeavor much under the push of Commissioner Henry to sort of reinvigorate a program for our youth involving baseball. And we know that across America, the inner-city baseball has been struggling to survive and thrive. And in this effort, no one has been a bigger supporter than the Tortugas. This year, they provided young people in our community with a donation in excess of $10,000 to help with uniforms and managing and running a first-class program for our young people in the city of Daytona Beach. So this plaque is presented from the city of Daytona Beach with grateful appreciation to the Daytona Tortugas for your continued support of the city of Daytona Beach and its leisure service recreational baseball program. Your support makes it possible for youth of all ages to participate in a positive recreational activity. Mayor Derrick Henry, City Manager James V. Chisholm, May 2019. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Henry, thank you. City Manager, City Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here. When we started our Tortugas Care Foundation a little over two years ago, we sat down with the city of Daytona Beach, and we said, what can we do to help? And one of the first things that was on that list was, we want to get Little League Baseball started back up here in Daytona Beach. There wasn't a system in place. Our young players were going to Ormond or Port Orange, and we wanted to keep them right here and develop a Little League Baseball team. So we cannot thank you and your city staff enough for, you know, helping to assist and do that. And I got to pay a lot of tribute to Trevor, our staff on the community relations side, and then our owner, Bob Forgol, who is here and help makes this all possible. So thank you for doing this. We've said over and over, we will continue to support this program and continue to help it grow. I know we had over 40 players this year, and we're going to keep growing that each and every year. So thank you for everything that you guys do to support this, for your partnership, and we cannot thank you enough for being here in Daytona Beach. Thank you all.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven, which is our citizen comments. This is public comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item that's on the consent agenda, and I have no speakers that signed up for the consent agenda.
We have a surprising motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
This week, I waited until she was not talking.
Moving on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code text amendment, amend Article 5, 6, and 11. This was an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code in relation to brew pubs, craft distilleries, microbreweries, and microwineries, amending Section 5.2. A and 5.3. B containing the list of principal and accessory uses respectively, to revise the listed permitted and special principal uses and permitted accessory uses for all industrial and tourist zoning districts and the BR1, BR2, BA, AG, RDB1, RDB2, RDB3, RDB4, RDB5, RDB8, RDB9, RDD1, RDD2, RDD3, RDD4, RDD6, RDD7, RDM1, RDM2, RDM3, RDM4, RDM5, PDG, PDRD zoning districts, amending Section 5.2. B principal use standards, amending Section 5.3. C accessory use standards, amending Section 6.2 parking space standards, amending Section 11.5 definitions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and it's at the request of the applicant to continue this item until the July 3, 2019 city commission meeting.
Motion to continue until July 6?
I can.
I can.
July 3.
July 3.
July 3.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and I believe it was second from Commissioner Delgado.
Yes.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number 9B, it's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Memorial Health Systems, Inc., First Amendment to the Memorial Health Systems, Inc. Planned District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement for the Memorial Health Systems, Inc. Planned Commercial Development to modify signage standards, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Don't move.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Trager, and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers for item 9B.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number 9C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Integrated LPGA Rezoning to Plan Development General PDG Preliminary Platte. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 391.8 plus or minus acres of property generally located west of North Tamoca Farms Road, east of LPGA Boulevard, and north of West International Speedway Boulevard from SFR 5 Single Family Residential to PDG Planned Development General District, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Integrated LPGA Planned District Agreement with the American SW30 Investments LLC to develop a mixed residential development and approval of the Integrated LPGA Phase A1 Preliminary Platte, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and it's at the request of the applicant that this item be continued to the July 3, 2019 city commission meeting.
Motion to continue until July 3.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number 9D, it's the Development and Administrative Services American Southwest 30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Proportionate Fair Share Agreement with the American SW30 Investments LLC and the County of Alusha, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by American SW30 Investments LLC related to the transportation facility concurrency for the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA project generally located west of North Tamoca Farms Road, east of LPGA Boulevard, south and east of Municipal Stadium, and north of West International Speedway Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, and it is on the request of the applicant that this item be continued to the July 3, 2019 city commission meeting.
Continue until July 3.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, we'll take the second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a quick point. Those two items were continued because the developers working with the residents, the city, the county, to try and work on the stoplight issue out of Grand Champion and ISB, and I want to applaud them for the effort they're putting into this. I think they're actually getting very close to a resolution, I think, will make all parties happy.
I'm very happy to hear that, and thank you for that update. Appreciate your efforts, and hopefully you can get it done.
Okay, moving on to item number 9E. It's the Public Works Technical Services Division Latitudes at Daytona Beach Phase One Partial Replat. It's a resolution quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Latitude at Daytona Beach Replat, a partial replat of lots 77 through 82 of the Latitude at Daytona Phase One Platte totaling approximately 0.702 acres located on the north side of LPGA Boulevard west of I-95, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
Don't move.
All right.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
And I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. John Townsend on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Okay. No questions for Mr. Merrill? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to item number 9F. It's the, sorry? Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Tamoca Town Center Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element neighborhood S to decrease the non-residential development floor area ratios and increase residential density for approximately 14.47 plus or minus acres generally located north of Mason Avenue and west of Williamson Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I do have a speaker for this item, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vernon Weatherholtz.
Weatherholtz?
And it is an ordinance, first reading public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Weatherholtz, and I live at 3 Grandville Circle, Daytona Beach. I'm all for the project. It's long been coming. I've seen some of the preliminaries, and I think it's a great idea. The only question that I have is, with approving this amount of housing, I'm sure the infrastructure is going to have to be redone to accommodate such a structure. I know we have in plans to redo a lot of Beach Street, you know, for the building that's going up now, brown and brown building.
This is the one out by Tamoca Town Center, out by the--
Oh, this isn't the one by the church.
Yeah, you're thinking about the Delta Project, which is item 10--
10--
10D and E.
Yeah. That one's on first reading, and it's not a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
It's all right.
That was my only speaker.
Oh, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to item number 9G. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code text amendment, amend Article 5 Mobile Food Vending. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Article 5, Section 5.4 Temporary Uses and Structures to Allow for Mobile Food Vending as a Temporary Use, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Don't move. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do have a speaker, Ms. Lisa Soros.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. I thought we had resolved the issue of food trucks along the beachside tourist district at the workshop that was done on March 6. It was, staff was instructed to, to only allow it in industrial and hospital zones, and instead, it's everywhere with a distance requirement. They will hurt the beachside businesses, and it will discourage investment down there. We don't need our side streets or government properties, particularly our government properties, to have itinerant vendors coming in, taking the customers that everybody has been waiting for. The beachside has plenty of food options for anyone that's looking to eat. Please do not allow these amendments to go through for the beachside tourist district. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
That was my only speaker for this item.
I got the minutes, too, and I looked them over, too, and we had decided that we did not want these in the tourist areas. I don't know how they got put back in, but I would like to make an amendment that we take the tourist areas out of this ordinance and also government-owned property, because I can see a plethora of food trucks around Ocean Center constantly.
Mayor, we're bleeding into the next item, which is the code portion of this. This is the zoning segment. That's fine, but I can't address Commissioner Trager's question. We did draft to the commission's request at the workshop, and we have excluded, or planning as excluded, I should say, allowance of food trucks along certain tourist districts or on more tourist-based thoroughfares.
I thought we had agreed at the workshop that that's not what we wanted.
We wanted them excluded from those areas, was my understanding coming out of that work.
The tourist areas.
So we've excluded from Atlantic Avenue, Seabreeze Boulevard, Oak Ridge Boulevard, Main Street, ISB, and Beach Street.
But these are in the table here. It shows tourist districts T1, T2, T4, T5, and that they would allow mobile food vendors.
Right, so that's accurate. The food trucks would be allowed in all districts, subject to the code of ordinances which we'll be adopting in the next item. So that's where your separation requires and your requirements are and your distance requirements are.
Then why is it in this table?
Mayor, if I may. Mr. Trager.
Yes.
I think what's going on is the item now is the general terms and provisions, and the next item coming up is the one that deals with spacing and prohibited areas and so on, so that your comments are appropriate on the next item, not that they're inappropriate now, but in terms of subject matter, the place to address it would actually be in the next item, and there's a memorandum that speaks to it, and certainly I will, and I know that the city attorney will be willing to answer your questions. All I'm saying is the item that we're currently on is just general provisions. When you turn to the next item in the agenda, that's the one that deals with prohibited areas and so on. When you look at the current item--
Like page 510.
Yes, ma'am. It's dealing with some general code provisions. It's not dealing with locations and so on. That comes up at 10A.
Well, if they say it's permitted in tourist districts T1, T2, T4, and T5, how would it--
Well, you have tourist districts that may not be on the beachside area that have that kind of zoning. These, like I said, the item now is a general provision, and when you look at the language in it, it does not speak to the subject matter. The subject matter is coming up tonight. I'm not trying to say that it isn't. It's simply the next item. So that if this item is addressed, however the commission elects to address it, pass or fail on first reading, the next item is where you'll deal with the substance of where they're excluded, and exclusion is there, as the city attorney pointed out, in the next item. It does allow things to be within 250 feet from the edge of certain things, and I think that's part of Ms. Halls--
What about government?
It's all in the next item.
Because I know they had some food trucks maybe about a month ago on Ocean Park.
Yes, ma'am. They did. And that all comes up in the next item. That's where you find the reference to government facilities, distances from the edge of pavement, and so on.
Hey, did I bring my amendment next?
Yes, ma'am. That's all I was trying to get to. The item now is very generic in terms of what it does. The next item is the one that has the substance that I think that you're concerned with and that Ms. Soros is concerned with as well.
I'm curious.
Yes.
It's generic. That being the case, if we say yes to it in the first part, not the second, meaning for the current amendment, it opens the door to what? Just the second?
Well--
Does it create a precedent? Does it save things?
No, ma'am. You have a code of ordinances. The code of ordinances deals with specifics in terms of some operational requirements. You have a land development code, which is more your permitted uses in neighborhoods and things that you can do. So it's almost like you've got a plug for regulation here in general provisions, deal with land use and specifics of it in the land development code, which is the next item at 10A. And that is where Ms. Soros has been concerned, is not so much with the item now. Her references were to the next item coming up. We've spoken in advance of this meeting, so we've had some conversation ahead, and it's just the next item that's there, and you can deal with the parts and pieces, in particular, the beachside area, because there are specific streets in 10A that are beachside streets. There's spacing of 250 feet from beachside streets. And in phone conversation with Ms. Soros, I know that that is her concern, is the beachside area. And certainly, I would invite you to ask her to come back and speak to it again if she wishes, because it is the next item. It's just the way the land development code works and the code of ordinances works, you've actually got two companion documents that work together, but you don't amend the land development code with the zoning ordinance amendment, and likewise, you don't amend the zoning ordinance or land development code with the general provision section. That's, that's all. I'm not trying to avoid the issue, I'm just trying to get to the right spot.
Am I understanding correctly, Mr. Morris, that we kind of have to enable this through change to the LDC, and then we have the specific provisions that the city commission asked for in the code of ordinances, which is the separate--
Actually, it's the inverse. It's the inverse. Yes, sir. But that is the proper reference, just the inverse in terms, land development code deals with the specific spacing requirements as it relates to parking. All those different things are in 10A. And certainly, we can pick that up and discuss any part that you want to of it. You're the commission, we can discuss it any time you wish, but it's more appropriate in the next item, not this one.
But first, we would allow food trucks as temporary use in all the zoning districts, and then we would go in and specifically allow them, but more clearly, do it in 10A.
That's correct. When you look at the five, page 504 of the memorandum from Dennis Morozic, who prepared all of this, it explains what's happening, and it's very short and to the point when you look at the memorandum as it relates to 9G. Now, 10A is much more detailed and deals with spacing, streets, exclusions, government facilities, all those things are dealt with in 10A.
Page 25, page number--
I've got it. I just was looking at the item, so you're right. Begins at, yeah, 5, a little sooner. But anyhow, that's where my pink markers are.
Yeah, so it's inherent that this, these two things are related together, and we can't, the uses have to comply with the specific restrictions or regulations set up in the code of ordinances.
That's right. That's right.
What would happen if this passed first and second reading and 10A failed?
If 10A failed, I think you probably have no place in the land development code that permits it. And so your land development code is basically authorizing for the activity on the land. That's why it's entitled the way it is. And you deal with, in 10A, you deal with not only excluded streets, as the city attorney referenced, you also deal with parking requirements, waste removal, there's a number of operational details in 10A. And so without it, you really have an incomplete section. I think the whole approach-- I think the whole approach is stillborn. Yes, ma'am.
At this moment, we still have permitted events, correct? This does not impact...
Special events, yes, special events, that's true.
We still have the process that if people want to have events, they can go through permitting.
You do.
This does not impact it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Suggested that if we do go to 10A and it fails entirely, then you'd probably want a motion to reconsider 9G.
G.
However, if we get to 10A and you just have some tweaks that we bring back on second reading, then you'll want to leave 9G in place, and we'll adopt them both at the same time at your next meeting.
I'm going to leave my book here, but I'm going to sit down until you call me back, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
All right, no further questions?
Is there any public...
And no other public comments.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from...
Delgado.
Delgado and Reed.
And...
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries six one.
Okay. The public hearing is set for June 19th, and for the record, item number 9F, the public hearing for that item is set for August 7th.
And I should also point out that when we get to 10A, it is on first reading, so that does mess up our timing a little bit. Depending on what you want to do, we can have a general discussion, but of course, we would take public comment on second reading.
Correct.
So if there's anything you want to do tonight with regard to the mobile food vending, we can discuss that among the board, but we'll take public comment next time.
Correct.
Okay?
So moving on to item number 10A, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Code of Ordeons Text Amendment, Mobile Food Vendors. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the city code of ordinances, creating Chapter 103, Mobile Food Vendors, establishing regulations and licensing requirements for mobile food vending, providing for regulations, providing a sunset date, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
No move. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Now, is this where I put my amendment in?
Yes, ma'am.
I think one is already in.
Commissioner, if you would, refer to the memorandum that begins at page 525.
525.
Yes, ma'am. And that will give you an itemized list of the things that I think that you are concerned with or that Ms. Saros might be concerned with.
Where would I find government?
Turn to the five, page at 526. It's also back in the body of the ordinance. I think you're only going to note, you're only going to find it back in the body of the ordinance, I think. I don't see it.
I don't see it.
No, ma'am. It doesn't jump out at me here.
The fourth to last bullet is not occur on public property unless the food vendor has written consent from the government entity owning the property on 526.
Okay, does see, they mentioned government property.
It does.
I'm sorry, was your mic on? I couldn't hear what you were saying.
So the fourth to last bullet on page 526 says, "Mobile food vending shall not occur on public property unless the mobile food vendor has written consent from the government entity owning the property."
Okay, thank you.
That's accurate, and it's not allowed in the right of way either.
It doesn't forbid it, it just said they have to get permission.
You bring up a good point. So the county, would the county be able to authorize the Ocean Center?
Sounds like it. Sounds like they could, and they could have it, what, seven days a week, eight hours a day?
Well, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't dictate hours, and I think that the answer to your question, the short answer is yes, it could.
I'd like to put an amendment that it not be allowed.
So with regard to the Ocean Center example, they would not be allowed within 200 feet of the edge of right of way from Atlantic?
So just in perspective...
They'd be set off if you would.
If you have, if you look at the bullets from the standpoint of what the commissioner's questions are, the fourth to the last bullet, I believe that her request is to amend to delete that provision. We haven't gotten yet to the 250 feet from the streets. I think that's coming.
Well, what if the fourth to last bullet changed to, "Mobile food vending shall not occur on public property," period?
That's correct.
And remove the piece where it's allowed by consent. That way it's just prohibited. Now, what would that do if you wanted to do a food truck rally in one of our parks?
Now, Commissioner May brought up that point a minute ago in respect to special events. Yes, special events are not governed by this. This is a general provision. If someone wanted to set up a food truck and have the permission...
Temporary special event.
Based on the spec, yes, ma'am.
Seven days a week, eight hours a day.
It would be based on the special event permit that's issued, and that goes through the process that you all are certainly somewhat, if not greatly, familiar with in respect to special events. And there is language in the ordinance proposal that exempts special events.
That's what I would like amendment for, please.
So that is, what is the harm that we're, Mr. Trager, I don't understand the harm that you're trying to avoid with your amendment.
I am trying to avoid seven days a week, eight hours a day, mobile food trucks that are more or less permanent institutions, not just during festivals or something else.
So the north...
I want to protect our small business owners primarily, who make the majority of their money during special events, and that carries them through the whole year. I think we need to foster small business in our city, and I don't, and keep our money here in our city with permanent residents, not allow an awful lot of outsiders in, make the money and take it with them. That's my primary concern, looking out for our residents.
And if I...
The northwest corner of Wild Olive and Main Street is owned by the county, and they do that static display there with Indian motorcycles.
Yes, sir.
Now, that would be prohibited because it's on Main Street.
That, it...
Even though it's public property.
It would not be, it would not be prohibited because it's also not vending. That's a static display, which does not have sales, and they are specifically limited there to static display.
It would not be prohibited under this because it's on Main Street.
It'd be 250 feet from Main Street. Also, if it's a vacant lot, I'm not sure how that parcel is, but if it's a vacant lot, it would also be prohibited. These, the food trucks are only allowed on improved lots.
They do have parking of sorts on that piece of property. But from the standpoint, Commissioner, the 250 feet, the edge of Main Street to the back of that property, it, once you've taken 250 out of it, there's very little left. So practically speaking, it doesn't...
I'm just trying to think of a county-owned piece of property where this could be detrimental. You know, so certainly the large parking lot they have for the Ocean Center that's on Hollywood and Auditorium, south east corner of that, would be allowed if they chose to permit it. I don't know that anybody would want to be there because there's no foot traffic really during non-event periods. And they use it for parking others. I just can't think of, I'm trying not to over-regulate this because...
I don't know that if someone wanted to put a food truck there, why would we not necessarily...
Yeah.
The thing is, we, I don't mind it sporadically. I just don't want it permanently. I mean, if they're wanting to do permanent business, they should go ahead and build a bricks and mortar building and maybe have it on their parking lot or something, but they should show intent that they want to stay here and be a part of our community.
That's interesting. Are we saying that you could have same food truck, get there every single day to the same spot, but move every night, and that's considered a fresh start every day?
That isn't, for the fresh start of the timeline, isn't really the instance. The instance is that there aren't any days limited. For instance, you have temporary promotional events, which is not the same thing as Bike Week activities, that have limited numbers of days that you can do that as a static business. There are no time limits in terms of the number of days a truck could use a site.
In a particular, so they could be there just every day pack up and...
Theoretically, that's certainly possible. In practice, that isn't ordinarily what occurs, but in theory, it certainly could occur.
I think that brings up a good point, Ms. Morris, is in theory, there may be a lot more problems than we expect would ever actually happen.
Correct.
And as a backup to this, not only do we have a lot of restrictions, but we also have one year, or actually less than one.
That's not in here.
It is.
It is in...
Yes, ma'am. If you turn to page 531, small Roman number, small three I's at the top of the page, second paragraph.
I'm curious with regard to that, Senator, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What I was saying was that we have a sunsetting period of a year or so, and I don't think that there will actually be any real harm based on all these limitations. There may be some areas where it would be possible to have, you know, the food truck appear every day or something like that, but I think that we run the risk of over-regulating this to the point where it's just so cumbersome that no one's going to do it, which I think is perhaps the point Commissioner Gilliland was getting at. And so, you know, whatever, unless we have a real specific concern that, you know, we can demonstrate a real harm, I think we should let this go as is, and if that's a real problem, we can always deal with it in the sunset provision like we had originally planned when we talked about this. But I don't want to go chasing too many shadows because I think the reality is, the economics are going to drive this, and, you know, the concern about one little thing that may or may not happen is probably not what we should be voting on. So that's why I was asking you, if there was a specific concern you had, then I'd like to see how it's permitted or not permitted under this. But I don't think that we necessarily need to worry about all the possibilities that could happen, because I think we've done a really good job of limiting it to be consistent with what we talked about and what the input from public comment was.
When the license fee is only a mere $100, that is a very disincentive for a vendor to apply for a permanent place or to try to get a permanent place if they can just, and there is no incentive for them to do that. I mean, it's $100. Pick up and you go somewhere else?
Well, if, if...
Per vehicle.
I mean, that's, that's less than, what, $10 a month?
If I might, Commissioner, if you look at page 529, item D, which is about the middle, hours of operation are limited to eight hours a day as well.
I was looking at 530, the bottom of the page.
The license fee is limited, or I should say, required, it's $100 per vehicle.
Right, for a whole year, correct? Not per place, per vehicle.
Up until the sunset date, yes.
I'm not sure if I recall this correctly, but did we say if we went with the sunset, that if something occurred before the sunset, that we could revisit this at any time?
I believe that comment was made at the meeting. I don't recall specifically.
You can certainly revisit this at any time and make amendments upon your majority vote.
Was the license fee one of those that's kind of dictated by the state, where you can only charge what it costs to administratively process and issue the license?
That's correct.
So Ruth, it's not like a liquor license where you're buying this commodity that you can resell at a later date, it's, you know...
Your license fee needs to be tied in roughly to your administrative cost of administering the license.
Yep.
Oh, so it can't be set as a barrier to entry? It has to be tied to our actual, okay.
Correct.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I can't feel that this would be a good thing for the city.
Let me say this, food trucks are, they're not free. When a person invests in a food truck, they're investing substantial amount of money. And as we move into a modern economy, things are changing from brick and mortar, and there is a reason that food trucks are in other municipalities across the country. In some cases, it's better to have food trucks because the brick and mortar buildings, you can do other things with them. So this is an experiment. It is not a permanent solution to anything. It's an experiment that we are endeavoring to engage in as a community, and I will, I hope it's, you know, I don't want to discourage it. We want to see if it can add to the variety of our community and some spice, so...
Like I said, I wouldn't mind a certain number of days or a festival of food trucks or something like that, but the idea that they can operate a mobile food truck for eight hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year, seems to me not temporary, but very permanent.
Okay. All right, do we have any other?
You know, I would, I'm not a huge fan of this, but I'm willing to give it a shot. You know, I mean, this is about as restrictive as we can make it. We didn't, we did not protect any corridors on the mainland, so I'm not sure how everybody else feels. I'm okay in my zone, because what I'm going to see is places that, you know, like Top Build and Teledyne and places out on Williamson, you know, where the, you know, they'll stop by at lunchtime. Fentress, you know, they'll make runs up and down Fentress. You know, places that where they're not easily accessible restaurants from there, and you have a lot of hourly employees that don't have a lot of time to get out of work, get in their car, drive someplace, get somebody to get back in their car, get back to work, get back on the floor. So, you know, I'm, I want to see how it works out, and, you know, I'll be the first one to make the motion, start, you know, messing around with this, making it tighter if we see some unintended consequences. But, you know, I think that we've made this about as tight as we can, and there's not much, you know, you know, Bel Air Plaza up in that area isn't protected, other than 250 feet off of Atlantic. You know, we don't really have east-west commercial corridors up there, but, you know, I, I think this is as much as we can, from a regulatory perspective, tighten it without it becoming something that's going to strangle it.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Go ahead and, no speakers on this side.
No, this one's not a public hearing, first reading.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no other comment, we'll go ahead and have a vote.
Do we need to do anything with the amendment?
I made an amendment, but nobody seconded.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries five two.
The public hearing is set for June 19th. Moving on to item number 10B, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Timoca Town Center First Amendment to Timoca Town Center Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Timoca Town Center Plan District Agreement to increase the number of permitted dwelling units, increase maximum building height, reduce the floor area ratio, modify lot development criteria, and modify permitted signage, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
No move. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission?
I'd like to ask Mr. Merrill a question. How, they want to increase the height from 75 feet to 95 feet, how many stories is that?
Mr. Merrill, if you would like to come up and, thank you.
I'm Merrill for the record with Cobb Call, 149 South Ridgewood. I don't know for sure, Ruth, I think it's two more stories. So the idea is that there's going to be a hotel here, we hope, and one of the things that you see on the agenda is the additional units for the apartments you and I talked about earlier. So this is kind of a trade-off between the FAR and the commercial properties, as we discussed, balanced against the additional 150 units. So there's 400 that's left in there in the comp plan, and we added 150 because apartments are coming to this, this area of the city, so there's demand for it.
This would be maybe 10 feet high, maybe 12 feet high?
Well, so the difference is 20 feet, right? So it depends on the ceiling heights. I'm not the engineer or the architect, but intuitively, I'd tell you a couple more stories is what we're talking about with the hotel. And again, I don't think height's an issue out here. From a hotel standpoint, you know, 75 versus 95, I think what happened is some of the hotel developers have come into the project and said they needed more height, so that's why it's there. I didn't see any objection from anybody at the TRT or the planning board about that. And we are in first reading, so we can talk about it at the public hearing, if you like[1791.01] And we are in first reading, so we can talk about it at the public hearing if you like as well, or before then.
Can you find out for me?
Sure. I don't think there's a definite answer because I don't think it's a project. In front of these, it's just at a comp plan stage. So we're trying to make sure that the hotel folks that they've been talking to would be accommodated by this additional height.
Also, on page 541, it says, "Planning Note. Staff has not yet received authorization from all the property owners within the boundaries of the PD agreement. Prior to city commission, the applicant will be required to provide authorization from all property owners for the proposed PD amendment."
Yeah, we have all that now.
It's in the folder here?
I don't know if it's in your folder or not, but we have it. So everybody's consented to it. There are multiple parties in this PD and in the comp plan area that's affected, Ruth. But they're all parties that are part of the project, if you will. Again, there's been zero objection by anybody. We've had neighborhood meetings, we've had the TRT process, which has been months coming, and then the, and then the planning board meeting, of course, and the staff recommendation of approval.
It just seems like before we vote on this, we should have all the...
So, yeah, what you're talking about there is the authorizations of the various property owners that are right there, they're part of the project, they're the developers. And I think there was a hang-up with getting something from somebody who's on vacation in that note that you saw there or something to that effect. So I just don't think that's an issue. Certainly before second reading, we'll make sure you have that. It's not a substantive comment, I don't think.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same motion?
Aye.
Motion carries six-one.
The public hearing is set for August 7th. Moving on to item number 10C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, LPGA Superwash Express III, First Amendment to the LPGA Superwash Express III Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the LPGA Superwash Express III Plan District Agreement to modify the approved signage for the planned development located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, south of LPGA Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions concerning this item? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
The public hearing is set for June 19th. Moving on to item number 10D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Delta West, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 of the Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 1.96 plus or minus acres of property located, property on the east side of North Ridgewood Avenue between West International Speedway Boulevard and Bay Street, from commercial mixed-use to high-intensity mixed-use, amending the future land use element of Neighborhood E to increase density and establish a floor area ratio for 5.99 plus or minus acres of property within the city block bounded by West International Speedway Boulevard, North Ridgewood Avenue, Bay Street, and Palmetto Avenue, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We'll move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gillan and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Excuse me, do we have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
The public hearing is set for June 19th. Moving on to item number 10E, it's the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Project Delta West, rezoning to planned development redevelopment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 5.99 plus or minus acres of property located within the city block bounded by West International Speedway Boulevard, North Ridgewood Avenue, Bay Street, and North Palmetto Avenue from RDD-2 Downtown Redevelopment Central Business District to RDD-3 Downtown Redevelopment Commercial to PDRD Planned Development to Redevelopment, approving the Project Delta West Plan District Agreement with DB Mainland LLC, providing for the redevelopment of the property as mixed-use commercial, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the planned district agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We'll move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed. If there are no questions, all motion. And a second, all in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
The public hearing is set for June 19th. Moving on to item number 10F, it's the Budget Office, City Manager's Office, amending Chapter 46, Article II, Sections 4626 and 4691 of the Code of Ordinances. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 46 City Code to amend Article II, Section 4626, entitled Appropriation of Fund Balance, Retained Earnings and Fund Balance, Retained Earnings Reserve Levels, and Section 4691 entitled Lapse of Appropriation, to clarify the policy as it relates to the segregated budgetary cash reserves, renewal replacement funds, and beginning budgetary fund balance for the purpose of the annual fiscal integrity, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We'll move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gillan and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Fred?
Right now, the city manager is authorized to spend up to $25,000. What does this do?
In effect, nothing. This is a duplication of language that is currently in the purchasing ordinances. And by having the same dollar figure in two separate places, what you've made is if any one of them gets amended, then we have contradictory ordinances. So what I'm doing is simplifying it so that the purchasing ordinance, which is where you'd expect to find this information, is the only place that gives that purchasing limit. This does not in any way change the purchasing ordinance.
The rules stay the same.
The rules stay the same.
Greater than 25 has to come before the commission first.
Of course. Part of the ordinances, yes.
The other thing is, if you go to page...
I don't have your... Oh, okay. You have the new one, yes.
Page three, I want to say.
Yes.
Paragraph two. It says that to expand, the language says to expand or replace the infrastructure as deemed necessary by the city manager. That entire section, if I read through, the part we took out was that if somebody new comes in and wants to build or wants to do anything, that they would incur the cost of the infrastructure. As it reads now, we incur the cost of the infrastructure?
No, no. That section in there, that whole numbered section, one through five on the next page, are what we can spend the R and R money on there. That section that was removed has nothing whatsoever to do with spending R and R money. It's just, was put in there as someone put it in there 12 years ago when it was written, but it has nothing to do with the 8% R and R fund.
Okay, and then, and I want to be clear one more time.
Yes.
So the part I really enjoyed about this, I enjoyed reading this...
Really? Thank you.
Was the bit about using funds for water, sewer, stormwater, and infrastructure. And so this is what part of it is going for, correct? As deemed by the city manager?
Yes, the 8% that we are, that fund is already in existence and it's just going to continue on as it has been.
Okay. I have to ask the question, I can't help myself.
Yes.
Why did I only get this at about 2 o'clock today?
It was originally in the other section. There was in your package, but honestly...
The changes, right?
A couple of changes. First of all, Bob looked at my memo. In my memo, I included definitions of terms, and he said, Fred, why aren't they in the ordinance? And so there's a whole new section of their definitions. There was one awkwardly worded sentence that was in there, and there are two paragraphs in the initial draft that really were more policy-type, not ordinance-type, and so they were removed. So that's the changes that were made.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
The public hearing is set for June 19th.
All right, comments and inquiries from the commission. We commence tonight with Commissioner Gillan.
Well, it was very disappointing that the half-cent sales tax did not pass. It did pass in Daytona Beach. Daytona Beach and South Daytona were the only two cities where it did pass. I refrained from saying anything derogatory about the other cities. So... But I think what that means is that we did a very good job of public education. And people understood that they were going to see improvements in their neighborhoods, and this was something good for them. You know, unfortunately, I think that there was a lot of social media, you know, Dustin White at the News Journal, some of the radio folks did a really poor job of confusing voters about what this was about. Anybody who talked about impact fees in the same breath with half-cent sales tax did not know what they were talking about. And it just, it creates a problem now that, you know, unfortunately, the people who voted no are going to have to suffer because we didn't, you know, you know... I had somebody that was very loud, an elected official, against the half-cent. And very high on the list in my zone to repave were streets in her neighborhood. And she's now going to have to explain to her neighbors why their streets aren't getting repaved. I do not envy her that task. I do, just to reiterate, I appreciate all the work that's being, you know, Mr. Watts over Cobb Cole and the developers of the integrated LPGA, working with the Grand Champion folks to try and, you know, do what they can at this point to improve that neighborhood as much as they, as possible. That stoplight, I'm still very hopeful that it will happen. It's not done yet. And actually, the gyms, I believe that the last point here is whether or not they want to give us money and have us build a light, or whether we just want them to build a light. I'd be much more comfortable with them building a light because that way, if there's any overrun, they're on the hook for it, as opposed to it coming the other way. I did talk with John Chaney this morning at the TPO Executive Committee meeting, and it sounds like because of a future widening plan out there, that the poles are going to have to be set 30 feet back from the edge of that, which is, it's going to, this is not going to be an easy or inexpensive stoplight to put in. So my personal preference, if there's another reason that I don't know about, that, why we want to have better control over it, then please let me know. Had a meeting out at the police department with the folks from Indigo. You know, they are all very nervous and uncomfortable. You know, everybody, you know, for almost everybody, the largest investment that you make in your lifetime is your home, and they are all looking at declining values. They're, if they are increasing, they're at least increasing at a rate less than, you know, folks in other communities because of this uncertainty with the golf course. To this date, the last, you know, we're still in the same position. My meeting with them on March 7th is the last time that we've had any communication between the owner and his development team and the city Daytona Beach. So, you know, we're, you know, we're going to get something eventually, and I do, you know, want us to make sure we share that as quickly as we can with the folks that live out there. And then lastly, you know, I, this is just one of those birds under my saddle, but the reporting in the News Journal's just gotten pretty abysmal. And there, one of their anonymous editors wrote this thing about City Island. Had that person read Eileen's article, then they wouldn't have made as many mistakes as they did in their editorial. And, you know, if Pat Rice is begging people to buy the News Journal in an editorial, you know, he needs to fix what's going on there if he wants people to resubscribe. I know probably 10, 12 people that have dropped their subscriptions in the last month because they just can't read it anymore. And, you know, the City Island thing, you know, Manatee Island's not going to get developed. We use grant money out there, you know? The grant money would have to be refunded. We just locked up the park with, you know, for the, you know, Hyatt and C.C. Brown, you know, riverfront esplanade. The county controls the library and the courthouse. We don't control that. That's, they do not have deed restrictions. If they wanted to put a condo up there now, they could, they would have the ability to move forward with that. You know, Jackie Robinson Ballpark is not going anywhere. You know, but the only thing out there that looks to me like it actually has development potential is the old Reserve Center. You know, the Army Reserve Center out, you know, in Halifax Harbor, which is chain-linked fence in a deserted brick building, you know? So it's not public property now. But, you know, there's some poor guy down in Port Orange who's about to have a heart attack over something that's not going to happen. And it's all because he's been misinformed by the News Journal. And it's just, it's driving me crazy. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'm probably going to have to call, I'm not going to have to. I'm going to call Pat Rice and talk to him about this because, you know, this is one of those things where, you know, the lack of trust in city government isn't because of what we're doing, it's because of what they're doing. And when you get circulating in your community at that level, and then you got people repeating it on social media, then, you know, we're stuck spending all our time trying to correct misinformation as opposed to trying to do things that are, you know, you know, my favorite is creating jobs, you know, creating opportunity for people. You know, but we spend so much time chasing our tail with this bad information circulating in the community that we don't have as much time to spend on things that are truly important that will improve quality of life and make people, you know, happier in our community. So I'll get off my soapbox then. It just, it's driving me crazy at this point.
I'm with you. Commissioner Henry?
The ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Superwash was today, so the soft open was today, and it is something to behold. It is a high-tech, very, very high-tech Superwash. Even, I couldn't get it right today. So you pull up onto the, to the little floaters and you put your car in neutral and you don't do anything else. It drives your car up and everything. So it's an amazing place, so you go out and check it out. It's a great place for the area and the community. The Zone 5 cleanup was this weekend, and I want to thank, police officers showed up in full force, firefighters, public works showed up, people from the different zones and communities showed up. And I want to thank everyone because I think within an hour and a half, two hours tops, we were able to make a good dent in the trash and litter in our community. And even my county commissioner came out as well, Heather, and I want to thank her. Something that we didn't think about with the panhandling order, and I need to know if there's anything that can be done about this, is that when the little leaguers get ready to do their car washes, it's considered panhandling. So little leaguers had a car wash not too long ago, and I got frantic calls at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning because the police were called on them for panhandling. And it's actually considered panhandling, of course. Chief just got, did a great job. He asked them to just move their signs and stuff back onto the properties. But I'm thinking that was not the intent of the panhandling. I think we kind of still want them to be able to have their little car washes and make their little money so they're not coming in here running and asking the city to fund all of their events. So I'm wondering if anything can be, if anything at all can be done about that because they were told they would have to cut off their, stop their car wash. But Chief, Chief did step in and handle it, but from now on, situations like that, I'd like to know what we, what can happen.
I can look at it. I honestly don't think the panhandling ordinance is applied that way, but there may be an issue with people in the right-of-way and just safety issues. But I'll be glad to look into that and get back to you.
Were they asking for money or were they asking for people to come to their car wash?
Come to the car wash.
I don't think that violates the panhandling ordinance.
But either way, I'm all...
Quick, quick, Chief of Police, it was just a miscommunication. It's all been resolved. And everybody's happy. It's not, it's two separate things. So it won't be, we won't have those problems in the future.
Okay, great. Because they called me already to see if we were going to have problems coming up.
Nope, nope. I've talked to some people over the last month too and that stuff, so I just assured them that that's not, it's totally separate. Well, you know, it's not us. It's people calling and complaining over nothing, so... But no, we're going to take care of them.
Okay. I want to offer my deepest condolences to my pastor, Pastor Durham, on the loss of his mom. He's not in the pulpit anymore, but he is still my pastor. I still respect him and love him as my pastor. So I do want to tell him that we love you. So, I do want to tell him that we love you, we're lifting you up in light and love and thinking about you and praying for you. Also, last thing is, I don't like to call all you wonderful people up for anything negative or put you on the spot, but when something great is going on, I'm definitely going to put you on the spot. So, I need Chief to come up and tell us about the STEM program that's coming up. And I want to thank him for helping with that because that's something that we all had looked forward to.
Yeah, the STEM camps ago, it filled up pretty quick. And we made some, actually added more seats. We were really flexible with that. It's July 15th through the 18th, and we'll be serving lunch to the kids. And we got the whole program from everything to do with science, the drones, and we hired a couple performers that are science-based performers, where they do some science projects. And then the big thing is going to be the crime scene. They're going to actually investigate a crime scene, take the prints, process the scene, and work a case up. We'll probably have close to 40 kids in there now. It's going to be a week-long event at the, a four-day event at the police department. So, very well received. People, it filled up quick, a lot quicker than I thought the word got out. So, it's going to be a great event. So, I'm looking forward to it. We'll be out there.
And I think that's wonderful because it's going to give children the opportunity to come to the police station and see that as a, as a positive in interacting.
And a lot of kids aren't, some kids aren't into sports. Some kids are into science, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, if we can give them, if we can give them that exposure, we're doing all kinds of stuff. We got some NASA stuff going. We got some tests we're doing. It's going to be a good time. We got a really good support from a lot of people that volunteered and made this happen. So, but thanks to you, Commissioner, for pushing us in that direction because sometimes we need to get pushed.
Thank you. Thank you so much for doing that, Chief. I really appreciate it. Last thing is, I've been getting tons of complaints about speeding and some not-so-good complaints about drugs in my zone. And Chief has done a phenomenal job with the DEA, Sheriff's Department.
FBI and...
FBI. Tell them...
We did a, we've been working these cases, and we got, we got more to come. But we just did two major big roundups with the sheriff's office where our detective was the case agent on that wiretap was a big heroin ring that we took off, like 30, 40 people. And then we did our roundup a couple, the next month, and we took off 75 people in the city that were selling drugs citywide, mostly up in 45 zone, up Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Henry's areas. 45 is just our police top, but Zone 3, Zone 5 and Zone 6. So, and it made a difference on the streets already, but with this, you got to keep on, keep on, keep on, keep on. And so, we got more stuff coming. The summer's here, and we're geared up, ready to go. And we're just keep attacking these drug problems. We don't need kids out here playing in the streets. And you got people riding around that they're trading their cars out for drugs. And people are driving these cars like banshees in these neighborhoods. And we don't want anybody to get hurt, let alone some little kid that's out from school or have to be caught in a situation where rival drug guys are fighting over some drugs and start shooting. So, we've been hammering it and not, we're not going to let up. So, our community's completely safe. Areas historically that we've had problems with have evolved, and they're not issues anymore. So, and that's took a couple, you know, decades to do that. If you look at South and King, for example, that was probably the most number-one spot in Volusia County to buy drugs. And it doesn't exist anymore. Wells and King doesn't exist anymore. So, a lot of these areas, we've just been hammering them. So, if you look at Martin Luther King, it's getting so much, you know, I mean, once the paving goes in, I think, and some businesses jump in there, I think that it's got a bright future there. Years ago, it was a problem area, and it's not a problem anymore. I talked to a lot of the older residents there that are thanking us for cleaning it up because they're a little scared. I get it. And soon as they call, we react right away. We have teams that go in there and just do what we can do to make the community a lot safer. So, we're not going to let up. So, 100-plus people in a matter of month and a half, two months. A lot of them are going federal, so we won't see them for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my comments tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me add to the portion about the panhandling. I just want to say that I don't think we've received, there's anything that we've done since I've been up here that has had a more positive expression from the residents than that particular ordinance. So, I'm sorry for the problem that it's caused our children, but I don't know of anything that's been more well-received.
If I might piggyback off of that, Mr. Mayor, I do have an individual that seems to reside on the corner of International Speedway and MLK, rubbing his tummy, saying he's hungry and stretching his hand out. So, if we could kind of go by there a little bit more frequent. Yeah. All right. I'm going to start my comments this evening by sharing a couple of things with you that I've already shared with staff. This is just FYI for you all. Bruce McNorton is a native Daytonian who is retired NFL football player, and he's currently a scout for the Pittsburgh Steelers. And he purchased some property on Mary McLeod-Bethune Boulevard that he has been in the process of developing for the past two years. And he's come into some hiccups. I don't know if he doesn't understand, I don't know if our rules and regulations are too strict or whatever, but I've asked the manager to check into that for me. So, I just want you to be aware of that. He purchased the old Singleton's cleaners on Mary McLeod-Bethune Boulevard, and he was looking to prepare something for adults to have to go. And I'm looking forward to that coming to fruition. I just thought that two years was a bit long for someone who's trying to do something positive. The other is, Mount Bethel Baptist Institutional Church is the oldest African-American church in our city, and it's experienced some devastating damage from two major hurricanes that have occurred. And they're in desperate need of repair and restore for this historical icon. And when I looked up today after I got the phone call, I actually got the call yesterday, but I got a call, I made a call today, and some history that's on our actual website says that, this is Daytona's first, I'm sorry, let me start where I started. Da-da-da-da-da-dun, da-da-da-dun. Okay. The primary founder and first pastor was Joseph Brooke Hankerson, who was elected Daytona's first African-American councilman in 1898. The renowned theologian and native Daytonian Howard Thurman was a member of this church, and so was our past mayor, Yvonne Scarlett Golden. And this is the church that I grew up in as well. They have received, they, they're not a national historical landmark, I did find that out today. They are on our African-American historical trail. However, they have gone through the small business loan, and they received a $495,000 loan, but yet it's still not enough. So, I'm going to put a plea out, and I know the News Journal is going to be doing a story sometime next week, but I just wanted to make it a matter of record that this church is in dire need. And you can call Petra, P-E-T-R-A, Smiley, that smile with a Y, at 255-6922, 255-6922, to please help assist this church in maintaining the history that it has in our city. Again, that's Petra Smiley at 255-6922. And I know there are some members in the church this evening that may come and speak to you as well, but I wanted to make a plea from the deus also, and to share that history with you on how it reflects upon us also. Now, I'd like to begin my comments on the positive note by recognizing two employees. Is Adam still here? I saw him earlier. Cladabuck, is he still here?
Yeah, he's over there.
Oh, okay. You know, Adam has served 25 years for fire EMS experience, he has 25 years of fire EMS experience. He served Daytona for 10 of those years. He was our first fire paramedic, and he has, oh, he's coming up for it, look at you. He, he has substituted for lieutenants while they were on vacation, and he's held the title EMT of the year. And he spent 10 years on the executive board of the Fire Union Council. In the past three-plus years, he's been the union president because of family health issues and just needing to be available for his family from 8 to 5. He's accepted a position in Deltona. And so, not only did he get a promotion, but from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, without having the hours that usually come with firemen. And he's done such a service for us. I just wanted to recognize him and let you all know that he's leaving us, but it doesn't mean that he's that far away. So, Adam, we just thank you for the service you provided. I know you're going to continue in your union chief or union, in your union presidency capacity until that ends.
I am.
Okay. And we just want to say thank you. And let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yeah.
Now, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but it has since happened. Volusia League of Cities recognized our very own Charles Bryant as the Community Planning and Development Employee of the Year. Although, you know, Charles works in redevelopment, but his services to the community for the first MLK cleanup, when I announced that, he orchestrated over 200 individuals to come out and volunteer to help with that. He initiated the light up Midtown and all the services that go with that, as well as our senior prom. And last year, we had a 93 and a 97-year-old king and queen at the prom. At this event, he was supported. We did have a full table, although somebody didn't show up that was supposed to. He was supported by his wife, his niece, Commissioner Traeger and her husband, Assistant City Betty Manager, and myself. And I was honored to stand up there and represent Daytona Beach and give him his award. So, let's give Charles a round of applause. Now, as Commissioner Henry indicated, my Zone 6 cleanup was the bomb as well. Now, the police didn't come out, I don't know why the police don't support me, you know what I'm saying? But fire showed up. Because they're arresting the children, that's why they couldn't come to the cleanup. The children in my zone. They're trying to have little car washes. And it was in my zone. The car wash was in my zone. Lord have mercy. But anyway, I just want to recognize a few people that were there. Harley Smith, Charles Bryant, Bobby Butler, Mr. Shepherd, Pam Kadenberg. And Public Works did an excellent job keeping up with us as we walked those streets with the garbage bags. Denzel Sykes and Code Enforcement were there. Pastor Byron Cogdell and his family and his church congregation, Identity Church came out as well. And this is by no means the least when I say that, say fire last, but they showed up and they showed out. And some of them brought their family. Okay? You asked for it, you got it. Midtown Motown is back, and it starts this Saturday. And the first event is a Whitney Houston tribute band, June 8th, from 7 to 9 p.m. at the Cypress Rec, Cypress Park. So, come out, bring your lawn chairs. I'm assuming, staff, there'll be vendors? Okay, vendors, so something to eat and what have you. And we do ask for a little contribution to try to help this. And it goes through November. Right now, we're promoting the, through September dates because the October, November bands have not been solidified. But it starts this Saturday, 7 to 9. Now, Rob kind of rubbed the News Journal a little wrong, and I'm sure there's some validity in what he said. But I want to boast about the article that they said this week that the number-one tourist attraction in Daytona Beach is not NASCAR. Did you read it on the front page? Dr. Mary McLeod-Bethune's home. Hello? So, thank you, News Journal, for bringing that to our attention. Um, da-da-da-da. Okay, I got something. I wrote a little note up here. Oh, I wanted to also thank staff. You know, our staff does a wonderful job, and they're working just like everybody else. And I try to consider them. I had a call this week for something to take place. They said on a Friday. I never heard this Friday. And within 24 hours, a program had been put together for this Friday. I was a little taken aback when I read that it was this Friday because I wouldn't necessarily jump through a hoop for this Friday if I weren't free. But I want to thank Chief Drew and Chief Craig and Betty for organizing this Panusa Murna. It's a youth program, and I'm thinking your first week, they just stopped school last week, and you didn't have your first week planned? Well, anyway, we're going to give them a little presentation at the police department. SWAT and the little canine dog's going to come out, and the fire's going to bring a truck. So, we're showing them that Daytona respects our neighboring cities, and we're going to come together and put something together. But thank you all, because that was last minute, and I know that you have other things to do, but you pulled this together. So, I thank you for that. Now, the last thing I'd like to share with you all is, drum roll, please. The seafood festival was the bomb! Thank you for having such an open mind, my colleagues, for when I presented this idea to you. Betty Goodman was an excellent project manager, managing staff, and Vincent Terry did a phenomenal job. I'm calling him the operations manager for orchestrating the operations. And yes, yes, I've given them new titles. But here's a little peek at what actually took place for those of you who weren't there. All right, Daytona! Herb and Seafood Festival 2019 in Daytona Beach, Florida. Brittany Presley, we thank you for the vision! City of Daytona Beach, we thank you for having the opportunity for the citizens to come out May 18, 2019! Do it, do it, do it, Daytona! Well, we've already had one of our meetings to look at the pros and the cons of how things have transpired, and we also anticipate having another one with the organizer as well. But when we looked at everything, we can just actually say that it was a very good affair. We served Daytona well. And what I'd like for us to consider is perhaps a multi-year contract with her, maybe do two years, and then we can relook at this again. I don't know what I'd do to do that, but we'll talk about that. But I want you to consider that. As you can see, people from all over Daytona were there, young, old. We had entertainment. It was, it was just a good day, and it was a beautiful day, too. So, thank you all for seeing the vision and stepping on, on board. That concludes my comments.
Excellent. Awesome.
Wow, that's one tough act to follow. Well, you can see Daytona Beach is a happening place. The Museum of Arts and Sciences is having an exhibit of the moon landing. I don't know how many people are here who were there when it did happen, but it's a very interesting exhibit. And of course, the fishing at Lake Valor. They caught the white albino catfish, that long, or maybe that long, or maybe that long? Well, you know fishermen, right? And a young lady won, caught the most fish, I think it was eight or 10. Daytona State had the opening of their L. Gale-Lemeron Student Center. Fantastic, highly tech. They have programs for both younger and older, and they, their main job or their main mission seems to be getting you graduated and all. The Maria Grande had their opening of their retail store. You know, it's been open for a while, though, the condominiums above, but they opened up a store down there. And everybody was dressed in the roaring twenties, or not everybody, but most everybody. And of course, a big shout-out to Charles Bryant again. We're so proud of you, Guy, really. And Adam, we're going to, we're going to miss you, Guy. The Boardwalk had their opening on Memorial Day, and they had the flyover. It was P-51, which was used during World War II. And from what I understand, there weren't a heck of a lot of them there, but it was loaned for that, I can't remember his name right now. Well, anyhow, it was a very nice time, very good crowd, loud music, but really good music. Loud music, but really good music. And a beautiful day. And fireworks. Talking about cleanup. So glad I see the city looking great. Zone 1 cleanup is going to be this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And they're going to meet at Terrace and South Street. Volunteers, we ask you for. And vests and everything else will be provided. And come out and help your neighbors. And Margaritaville is having a ribbon cutting the same day, Saturday. So, that's about it.
All right, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went out yesterday to the Volusia County Branch Jail and I had a tour of the facility with Deputy Warden Flowers. And I went there to kind of get some ideas for the first step shelter. Because we've, you know, there's a lot of synergies there. And I'd like to ask Dr. Durham if you have a chance to go and meet with him or go out and see the facility. It's a real... Have you made any contact with him? Okay.
Dr. Durham, Community Relations Manager. Yes, sir. Chief Drew and I and the manager will be meeting with them on June 20th.
Great.
To discuss both the food costs as well as the laundry services. Very excited about that.
And while you're there, if you get them to show you the dorm-type setup that they use in the facility that houses people who are under sentence, I think it'll be a lot of really good ideas for very cost-effective solutions for the space that they have.
Yes, sir.
I thought they had a lot going on. Thank you very much.
I'm very happy to go out there and check that out with the manager.
They grow fruits and vegetables and things like that. So I think there's a lot of good synergies that we can take away from there and a lot of good... From an operational perspective, there's a lot of good stuff there I think that we can partner with them on.
Thank you so much.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, I know that there's contracting negotiations for our firefighters. And I think that as a matter of policy, we should make sure that our firefighters are the best paid in the area and in the county for sure. And I don't know that that currently is the case. In fact, I think it is not the case. So we talked a lot about wages and we talked about, we were talking in the past about the salaries of the city and things like that. But I think it's important that when we, at least my desire is that our firefighters and our first responders, including the police, be the best paid in the county and make it a very competitive thing where we're recruiting and continuing to capture and retain the best. I know Adam's leaving for a variety of reasons, but you know, we don't want to lose our great first responders to other municipalities. In fact, we want to drain them here to us. So I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that's my perception and my desire. And if that's the desire of the commission, then maybe we could give that as a directive for the upcoming negotiations. Other than that, the community lost a really great guy. Deputy, I guess he's technically a senior deputy, Frank Schofield, if you've ever been to the courthouse or ever seen any kind of Marine Patrol. Deputy Schofield was like 100 feet tall. He was the guy that was always there. And he was hit and killed Sunday bicycling at a pretty dangerous intersection, I think up in Ormond, was it? He was a great guy. And he has a, there's a celebration or remembrance tomorrow at the...
First Baptist.
First Baptist Church of Daytona Beach. I think it starts at 11 o'clock and then there's a reception immediately following. So he was a really great guy. And you know, I'm sorry, and I have my sympathies to his family, to everyone who knew him. But I did want to announce there was that service tomorrow right around the corner from us here at the Baptist Church. So I hate to end on a sad note, but he'll be missed. And Chief, I know you guys do a lot of the rides and hopefully I would do some ride in his honor or something. So thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
So there are two things that I'd like to discuss with the board or the commission. The first thing is, when I first came on commission, I listened to Commissioner Henry really be passionate about housing. And I appreciated that. And you were talking about modular homes and container homes. I looked into it. And I heard the mayor also discuss, you know, the emphasis that we have on housing. And I think it's great. So I support all of that. This week, I went to Housing Authority and I did some volunteer work out there. I was doing some speaking for the organization. And I realized that what we had not discussed yet was infill housing. And because I'm late to the commission and you've been here before, I know in Zone 3, I'm not sure if Commissioner Reed feels the same way, but I know in Zone 3, we would benefit from infill housing. So I'm curious, are we making directions down that road as well? Are we interested in having like somebody come in and do some infill housing that were presented to us? Would we have an interest in pursuing that?
Well, I'm interested in anything that's going to bring affordable housing. And if infill housing is a good route, that's not something that I have a lot of information about myself.
And the city is open to this as well, I believe? Okay. That's just one of the first things I wanted to clear up. The other thing was, I like going off to Commissioner Delgado. He brings up first step shelters. So... What I would like to know is, what are... I believe in diversity and inclusion. I'm a big advocate of diversity and inclusion. And I would like to know how we can go about creating that on the first step board shelter committee. And I don't see any women on the board. And I would like to see one or two women on the board. At the same time, I'm not sure necessarily, and we have to talk about this as a group, right? Maybe we don't want that. I mean, I do. I would like to see that on the board. What I would like to know, too, is how... I would like us to have women on the board without necessarily expanding the board. It's already difficult to make a decision as it is now. So what could we come up with where we have women, but the board number doesn't change? And the obvious thing is that possibly there are some members on the board who would like to, as a courtesy to women, to allow this to happen, to have that diversity and inclusion. Possibly consider as a courtesy to allow somebody else the opportunity to bring two more perspectives or one more perspective. And specifically, if there is anybody interested, if this does move forward, in some way, it's an idea and that's really all I can give on my mind, that's it. Somebody who has a business background and who is well-connected in the community and who is not scared and has some experience with fundraising. That is the kind of background that I think would be interesting to have on the board. So if you have any questions, comments, concerns, if not, that's fine. Those are my two points. On a friendly, happy note, I am a friendly, happy commissioner. I went to Campbell. I went to the Campbell graduation and I spoke there. I'm at the graduation. I appreciated being there and seeing the eighth graders graduate form my heart. I went to the Housing Authority event and I was present at the firefighters', their first conversation about wage increases. So it's been a very busy time. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. First thing, I want to just rehash some of what's been stated by you all. Have made some great comments tonight and a lot of great things have transpired in our community. Seafood Festival was really, I thought, well-attended, well-done. And just a good event for the city. And we both enjoyed. The food was excellent. And the atmosphere was great. The weather was good. It also highlighted, you know, the fact that people in our city do want things to do in the core of the city. They want to have places to go and they want to be stimulated. It also highlighted in my mind, you know, looking at the buildings there, what a challenge it is. But it would be nice if we could find some way to just show that there is a reason to invest in that area. And I thought that, for me, that was the best, really the best takeaway from the event was that it showed that if people are willing, really willing to come down here, we just have to have someplace for them to go and something for them to do. And in this case, something for them to eat, which was excellent. As it relates to the percent sales tax, I think it's important for us to always know that taxes are a political endeavor. And they have a political life of their own. And it's an easy target when you essentially want to raise taxes. And I was, I do want to say to our staff, I thought you all did a great job of marketing what we wanted to do as a municipality where we granted these funds. And I thought we, as a commission, made a decision that I think was truly in the best interest of the people who live here first. And I'm proud of what we planned to do with the revenue if we were the recipients of it. And I do realize that we have to acknowledge that it's impossible for us to do all of those things, no matter what. But I am also proud of the commitment that we've shown as a city as it relates to our infrastructure and our roads. Because a lot of, it's easy to instill distrust in people about the intentions of government. Different people have different reasons for why they don't trust government. Some is because of the historical issues as it relates to being minorities or as it relates to being on the beach side and feeling as though the beach is being taken away. And there's a lot of reasons to be frustrated with government. But I am proud of what we've been able to do with the resources that we have as a city. When you think about a lot of the major infrastructure projects that we've been able to take on. Here just recently, even, it's taken a while, but Martin Luther King being done or playing. Orange Avenue. I think back to even when we were able to do Derbyshire Road, which was seven, eight years ago. But major infrastructure projects here recently, Jimmy Ann. In areas where people oftentimes have had a historical right to feel frustrated with government. So I'm proud of what we've been able to do. Let us not, as elected officials, see this as a reason for us to be frustrated or to feel as though we can't continue to do what we can. And so let's continue to realize that chief among what we're expected to do, one of the chief things is to find creative ways to address infrastructure and water problems. And there again, a large part of our plan was to address flooding, which has been a primary agenda and objective of this commission since I joined, even as a commissioner. So let's continue, and the charge is for you to continue to try to find ways to press forward. And finally, let's not be frustrated with the residents and those who have summoned the call against this. Let's find ways to build a bridge. Because at the end of the day, we all want the projects that were listed. We just may have different agendas about who's to do those projects. But let's figure a way to build a bridge and push forward. As it relates to City Island, I think your comments were spot on as it relates to the hysteria that is sort of... It's easy to sell newspapers with a form or a brand of yellow journalism. When you just, you generate folks and you just get them stoked up about something that's really not, doesn't have any reality, any basis in reality. For me, and I, but I do, one of the things I do want to say is that I agree with the article in the sense that we now know that people are concerned about what's going to happen at City Island. And we want to be as transparent as possible. I didn't feel as though we did anything that was outside of the sunshine. We stated publicly what our intentions were. I think that it is, and I will, you know, I'm willing to state this politically as it relates to what our intentions were. I think we are right to have a desire to have a free and clear deed to City Island. I mean, it's the proper thing for the city to have a right to. What the decision is, I do also believe that it is proper for us to be transparent and to engage the community because it is a community treasure and resource. It's something that we all value. But we should have that right for several reasons. One, communities change. They evolve and they grow. And what our desires of City Island are today may not be what the desires of the next generation or two generations removed 50 or 60 years from now are. But what we should do is have a clear conversation about what can be done. What are the things that are for us, even as a commission, that are non-negotiables? What do we desire that did not change? For me, aside from Mary McLeod Bethune's grave, I view Jackie Robinson as our most historically treasured resource. Something that in my mind is an untouchable for City Island. It's just not a place that we should even, that I would ever personally consider making a change in terms of removing the ballpark. But I'm also, as everyone knows, and I just want to be clear, I'm always willing to engage in a dialogue about things because I believe that's what's healthy for a community. You can't be afraid to talk about things that people may be afraid of because we're elected or because we're government. This is where conversations have to come from. We have to be the conduits for healthy dialogue. And I'm never afraid to have those. And even as it relates to City Island, and even as it relates to, you know, the possibility of the property that you named being redeveloped. Because that's how people become afraid of you. When you're unwilling to come out in the open, have a dialogue, talk about it, and then make decisions based on what the community states and says. And so that's something I think is important. Next thing I want to say is, school is out. Sponsor a kid for swimming. I can think of, as I take my three-year-old to swimming lessons every morning right now, I can think of no greater gift of safety that we can give to our children in our community than providing swimming lessons to a kid whose parents cannot afford it. I value it greatly. It's sort of like when I talk about health insurance and healthcare. I take those things very seriously. And so I'm speaking to people in our community. You know, sponsor a kid, ensure that some kid has an opportunity to learn how to swim. There's a lot of water here and we have a lot of swimming accidents. Judge Grimes on the 13th, unfortunately, I will not be here. But there is, he will be honored for the service that he and his wife have rendered to Bethune-Cookman. She a lot longer than him, but him in a very tenuous time in the institution. Regret that I will not be here, but will be sending felicitations and congratulations to the both of them. That concludes my comments. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. I want to, I think we've had a great discussion this evening on the progress of Daytona Beach and really all the great things that are going on that youth commissioners have approved and made it possible to happen. I myself, you know, an example tonight, this was approved tonight. What I'm showing you is a sketch of a project downtown that started about a year ago. And it goes through a whole process to get to the point where it actually gets approved. But it starts out with something like this. It doesn't start out with the fancy plans and all the schematics and everything that people see in the end. But this has gone through numerous public hearings and tonight was the first approval of the Delta Project. And it is, it is a part of the process that people forget about. They don't, it doesn't get their attention until, oh my gosh, here it is. Even though we've been talking, we have talked about this from up here for over a year. And we have a lot of projects like that. And so one thing that I'm going to do that I think will help somewhat, we're going to create a video on projects of the status of Daytona Beach today and then point to the various projects that are not approved, but projects that are on the table that will be coming forward at some point in the next couple of years. So that we can, you know, dispel some of this idle conversation that occurs about how we didn't say something, but something happened, you know? And give the public some appearance that we're doing something, you know, that's nefarious and... and underhanded just because we didn't go to them and say, here is this project, it's going to get built. And that's kind of what we're all experiencing. And I've already had that discussion with the editor once. And I could tell you, he was not pleased with me. And I am not pleased with him either. But at the same time, you know, we're going to provide the best information we can through our staff and the effort that Susan Sabona and her staff puts forward to inform the public as well as the commission on the various projects that we're engaged in. But with that, we've got a great staff. I mean, you've given, you know, the kind of support that's necessary for us to be able to move forward and we're going to continue to do that as we go forward, Mayor.
All right, no further comments. This meeting is adjourned. We'll take public comments right away. All right, let's commence. First speaker, is it Ms. Johnson?
Our first speaker tonight is Mike Pinagio and on deck is Bob Beebe.
Mike, I got to talk to you about basketball cans.
We got lots of basketball cans. Mike Pinagio, I'm here to speak about First Step Shelter.
Yes, sir.
I want to, first of all, applaud the board here. I mean, this is the first meeting I've actually sat through the whole thing. And very interesting and I think I'll be back. Great comments from Rob and Donette and everybody and it's really eye-opening for me. I want to just comment on what, something Quanita said on the board and certainly just to, I mean, you guys all know what kind of commitment Daytona Beach has. It's enormous and I applaud you for your commitment to this community and what you're doing with First Step Shelter. That's why I've been not only motivated by you, but I've been inspired to take my very busy schedule and still commit time and effort to it. And I refuse to lose. And I think as a community, it says something about our personality, our perseverance and the fact is that how we treat others. So, I'm very encouraged on what's going on. I think the building itself, I've been out to the building many times, is a great building. I mean, anyone that has not been out there should go out and take a look at these six-and-a-half-inch walls. It's extremely well-built and I think we're going to get our money's worth out of it. So, getting to the point, we do need some more diversity on the board. We've talked about that. We've got great leadership with Derek. I do my best. I think we're sort of, as if it were a baseball game, I think we got the first seven innings from our pitcher. I think he's brought us to a point where we need some relief. And the big job to be done is going to be in raising funds. And our board needs to be ready to raise funds. And I think that otherwise, all the great work that's been done is going to go for naught. And so, I agree, I think we need some women on the board. I don't know about expanding the board, but certainly the people that are on there are great people. I've learned to appreciate all of them. I think everyone cares. Problem is, they represent their cities. And I think we got to start representing this project. So, three, two, one, zero. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm going to add to that because I'm on the board also. I'm not opposed to expanding the board to, you know, one or two people or three people who are of the Mike Pinagio background. You know, I'm not opposed to women. It just so happens to be that that's who the city sent to us as nominees. We really didn't have a lot to do with who they chose. So, that really, you know, is not, wasn't our decision. But I think we were prudent in accepting who they sent. But I'm not opposed to if we can, and I think the board is agreeable and desirous of a few more people, and we said this at the last meeting, of a different background other than a political background, more in the mind of raising funds and more of a business mentality. So, if this commission should generate names of such persons, I think we should, we would be wise to give them consideration because I think it's within our purview to do that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
If we were to generate names, where do we submit them? At the next commission meeting or just email them to the board?
I think, I don't, do you, is it the board that has to expand or is it us? How does that work?
Well, we'd have to amend the bylaws, I believe, to the board or the articles, but something within the commission's purview.
So, it's within our purview, so the point is, but I want to remind you, person of Mike's talent is enormous. He's a, what he's given to us, you know, that doesn't come every other day. You know, his talent and his skill, his insight doesn't come every day. And so, but I think it's up to this commission and as well as the board members to find that, those people. Okay? But I don't want us to be limited based on gender. I want us to be based on the person who can help us to fulfill the mission. And I'm all for diversity. Heaven knows, no one, I don't feel embraces diversity more than I do. But it's got to be the right, it has to be the right person.
I'm unsure and I mean, you appreciate discussion, so I appreciate that too. I'm unsure about expansion only because it's, it just seems like it's a challenge, maybe you could speak to this, I don't know, right? To come to a decision with that many, how doable is that? I'm curious.
I mean, I'm the chair of the board. I don't, I don't believe it to be that much of a challenge.
So, it'd go from seven to 10?
Seven to nine, no, 10. I don't believe it's that much of a challenge.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Mike, you want to speak to that?
I agree with you. We need to get the right people. And sometimes, and we're crazy not to have some women on the board because we can send them, especially if they're businesswomen, into certain situations and they'll be able to get funds. Because I don't know that we can depend on the cities forever to support First Step Shelter. As a matter of fact, I've heard from the city manager that there's a commitment for five years. It's not a commitment for 50 years. So, we're going to have to figure this thing out soon on how to create sustainability. Otherwise, we all fail as a community.
Okay.
If that's the direction you want to go, I would have to look into that. I'd have to look and see how the bylaws and the articles of incorporation can be amended. So, I'll be glad to report back to you on that if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Bob Beebe and on deck is Mary Ellen Johnson.
And my name's Bob Beebe, 541 Champion Ridge Drive. I've been here before talking about Grand Champion and the expansion. First of all, I want to thank especially my commissioner for how much work he's done working with the attorneys and the rest of our group to try to get things resolved in a amicable way. Let me start by saying we're not against growth, but we are for, we're for responsible growth. And that could be a whole new conversation, but we won't go there. Unfortunately, the attorneys for the developer are no longer here, but what I'd like to say to them is, don't tell us what we want to hear to get our approval. Then make sure agreements are worded so that those promises conveniently never materialize, yet you can't be held accountable. That's such, so it's just a key thing for me. All you have to do is look at the agreement for Grand Champion and you'll see a perfect example of what I mean. I would venture to say that there was never a hard plan for Phase Two, which is when the light was to be installed. There's a great saying that goes, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Our understanding is that agreement now being considered states that the light at ISB and Grand Champion Boulevard would be installed at the beginning of Phase Two. But at a recent community meeting, Mr. Watson Cobb Cole indicated it would be installed when the first occupancy permit is issued for Phase Two. That would be after all the construction equipment for grading, building roads, infrastructure, power, water, sewer, the models, that, all that construction equipment would have traveled through our community via the F-graded intersection we have that we've been discussing since the plan is to also connect to Grand Champion Boulevard. Now, you know, will the developer bring all that equipment, noise and dust to their brand-new community, Phase One? I seriously doubt it. To add insult to injury, I'm going to call them impact fees, I hope I use the right term, $1.6 million. The impact fees calculate that less than 10% of the cost of the light would be funded by the developer based on a traffic survey. At the same time, a much larger portion of the impact fees would be voted to the Williamson Avenue project, Williamson Boulevard, a project that really has no direct impact on Grand Champion nor the other area communities. Does the developer in writing this agreement decide how the impact fees are allocated or is it a negotiation between the city and the developer? In either case, I would argue that the impact fees should be allocated to areas likely impacted.
Thank you, sir.
Fool me once.